Members that are here and staff that are here, after you introduce yourself, if you could choose the next person. So I'm Michelle DePass and I'm the Director, Board Director in Zone 2. I'll pass it to Nathaniel.
I'm Nathaniel. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a senior at Jefferson High School and student rep to the board. I'll pass it to Andrew.
Hi, good evening. I'm Andrew Scott. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a PPS Board Director from Zone 1. And I don't see any other board members, so I'll pass it off to Dan.
Good evening. I'm Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer, and I am the Staff Liaison for this committee. And I apologize, Michelle, when I was putting my earbuds on. Are we only doing all the staff or?
Yeah, or staff. We can do the staff that's here. There are about 13 of us in the room, so.
Okay.
Just to say your name and your role.
Great. Well, I will then pass it to Emily.
Good evening. My name's Emily Courtenage, and I am the Director of Purchasing and Contracting. And I'll pass it on to Paul Williams.
Hi, Paul Williams, Manager of Solicitation, Purchasing, Contracting. And I'll pass it over to Patrick.
Hi, I'm Patrick LeBeuf, Director of Projects and Construction in Facilities. And I'll pass it to Rebecca Nguyen.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Nguyen. I am working on the design standards. And I will pass it on to Dani.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dani Ladusma. I'm with PPS. I'm the Senior Advisor for Racial Equity and Social Justice. I'll pass it on to Jonathan.
Hi, everybody. Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff here. And good to see you all. Roseanne?
Roseanne Powell, Board Manager. And let me change my view so I can see who's in the room. I'll start with Cara. That's easy for me.
Hi, Cara Bradshaw, Executive Assistant to the Board. Mary, did you go? I think.
I did not go. Mary Weiner, I am managing the Instructional Resource Adoption part of the bond. And I cannot see everybody because I'm on a small screen right now, so I'm hoping someone will volunteer.
I think that may be it.
I think that is. I think that everyone is gone. And I really appreciate, even though this exercise seems a little redundant every time, but I really appreciate hearing everybody's voice in the room. It's really important to me personally, so.
I actually was gonna say, I was gonna thank you because I don't, I don't, I don't think that that happens often. So I actually enjoyed that, so thank you.
You're so welcome. I had a call this morning on the way to Sobi Island from the ED of the American Leadership Forum, and she was sharing her indigenous way of knowing and learning. And that was about asking everybody in attendance if they were fully, what they needed to be fully present in the meeting. And it felt so, it just felt calming and restorative to hear that. So I think if we can just, you know, start out here by saying our names, acknowledging our humanness in the room, and then getting to the business of the meeting, it makes me feel like I've done my job. So appreciate again, hearing everybody. So is there any public comment, Cara?
There's not.
Okay. Then we need to acknowledge our previous meeting minutes, which I apologize, I don't have and I don't know if that was an oversight or if those were, let me see if I can check, if those were sent to us. And so I have not reviewed those.
I did send them this week for the last meeting and posted them, but I don't remember which day.
Okay, so that's on me. I will take a look at them. I won't take the time now to review them. I guess we're gonna start out with updates. Today, we're gonna talk about the update on the Center for Black Student Excellence, an update on the 2020 Bond Capacity Scope of Work, a discussion on PPS Business Equity, the Status and Goals, and an overview of the EdSpecs, Education Specifications and Design Standards. I don't have names assigned to each of those topics, but if we could start off with the update on the Center for Black Student Excellence and the Jefferson Engagement Plan, that would be great.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll help steer who's going to lead each, each item. And for this one, I know Jonathan and Dani, I think you're both going to provide an update. So I'll let you decide who wants to go first.
I'm just gonna say hi, everybody, and turn it over to Dani.
Hi, everyone. Well, I'm so excited that I get to sort of share some update with everyone, especially after last Tuesday's or this Tuesday's Board Meeting. I think that there is so much positive energy after just what has been a really difficult and challenging year. It feels really good to be at an institution that has the goodwill and is really trying to do right by all of our communities, specifically our Black community. And just the, the amount of just sort of like emotion that was in the room on Tuesday was really a testament to, I think, what we want to try to achieve and that like really big audacious goal of creating a Center for Black Student Excellence at PPS that really is a beacon and a place to call home for folks who have for too long felt a distance from educational justice and from, and from our institutions. So I, one of the things that really struck me was that there are so many voices, elder voices and youth voices. And I loved the clamoring for who was older and who was younger. It was amazing. But one of the things I was really struck by, having known Joyce Harris for so long, is the thing that I have not been able to get out of my mind is during her testimony, when she was sort of recalling elders and talking about the work, was just the glee in her voice. And she, it was almost like an offhand comment, but when she said, "This is gonna be great", and just the like absolute joy. And I think a lot about our Superintendent and how he really calls us to, to think about joyful learning. And it was just so apparent that someone like Joyce Harris, who's been in our community for so long, really doing the work of educational justice, to see that joy and to hear that joy is just really, really amazing. And so I think what we wanted to try to do is to be extra careful and tender with that joy. We want to make sure that we maintain that level of joy and community agency and co-construction throughout the entire process. So I wanted to just give you a quick update, a little bit about how we're thinking about moving through. There are, of course, lots of challenges and lots of opportunities and a sense of urgency. And also, I think we really want to think how we can do this differently and, and to really sort of want, want, want to go slow, to go, to go the right direction and go with many. So there's a one-pager that we've developed that is just another sort of like high-level reminder of sort of the connection to the values. As you all know, we've been deeply, we've been working deeply on racial justice and racial equity for quite some time at PPS. And over the past years, under the Superintendent's leadership, we've really crystallized that focus onto our, making sure that we're centering our work around the experience of Black and Native students. And we really see the Center for Black Student Excellence and the correlating opportunity to reimagine the Jefferson campus as a way to really, to really sort of put our values into practice and into the really good work of building on not only a legacy, but also a tradition of excellence. So we want to make sure that we really are thinking about what co-construction looks like. And so what we are about to do is to launch a year-long planning process. There will be elements of traditional sort of master, master planning because we'll need to make sure that that happens. But one of the things that we want to make sure is that folks are really clear about that we're not only designing to, to make this space reflective of the community, but we really want to make sure that we're thinking about co-construction in terms of an educational program. How do we think about our? How do we think about our? How do we, sorry, my computer just beeped at me. How do we think about our, our innovative efforts like middle school innovation redesign and make sure that not only is this design process for middle school redesign instructive of, but also informed by, right? How do we make sure that we think about some of the work that we've been doing with our partners around racial equity, social justice strategies, and implementing them at the school site? How do we ensure that that's really embedded in the supports, in the educational supports and the social emotional supports at the, at the, at the campus and in the center? So we want to make sure that, as before we get into the bricks and sticks that we're really focused in on the programming. And to do that, we want to rest on a couple of, rest on a design process that has really served us well and continues to serve us well in a couple of areas. If you'll recall, when we started the naming and defining places process, we, we really sort of utilized a design process for engagement and for recommendations, utilizing Racial Equity Center Design out of Stanford. And so we'd like to continue to draw on this racial equity designed process where we have a period of learning, a period of ideating, a period to sort of test and refine some of the, the work that's coming out of it, and then move to recommendations. And so before we launch in the fall, we want to take some time. We're really fortunate because our community has, has really sort of taken the Center for Black, taken a lot of ownership of the Black Student, the Center for Black Student Excellence. So not only did you hear the excitement and joy of many of our partners, but leaders in philanthropy have really sort of also tried to invest in some of our partners to be able to give some planning time. So organizations like the Oregon Community Foundation, as well as Meyer Memorial Trust, have invested in our partners so that they can fully participate and bring all their expertise and energy into the process. And so we want to make sure that as we, as we go into this design process, that we're really thoughtful about the use of people's time and expertise, that we're looking to the richness and the diversity within our community, but that we're also looking beyond the, beyond the, the sort of, the boundaries of our region, of our state, and looking across the country and even internationally to see how we can really enforce the best learning and, and really sort of continue that tradition of Black, Black excellence and bring it, bring it to Portland so that our students, our families and our communities know that this is a place that is not only for them, but by them and of them. And so that we really are creating the space, that's, that's great. So we will be really, the next couple of months, working on developing that sort of initial stages of trust, making sure that we've got a good team that spans the expertise across our organization, across our system, as well as really sort of mining the community and making sure that we've got everyone who has a desire, everyone who has an interest, who can play a role, so that when we talk about co-construction, it's really easy to see the community's imprint, the community's design, the community's hopes and dreams twisted in with all of ours. And so this one-pager gives a little bit more detail. We'll continue to get more detail. I think one thing that we want to do is we want to make sure that we're moving in step with our community. And so you'll notice that everything is very, we're still at a, at a level so that we can, everyone can bring their best idea and thinking as we continue to refine and refine and refine in this process. At the same time, I also want to reassure the Board and this committee that our wonderful friends in Operations and OSM, Dan and Marina, have been fantastic in letting us understand and helping to, helping us to understand what are some of the harder, more finite deadlines in terms of construction and our bond expenditures. And we've had, we've been able to engage in really, I think fruitful, dynamic conversations about sort of how we, how we make sure that this is, that excellence goes all around, that we're able to really shine in our area of planning and design and in community engagement and in educational expertise. So I think we can really, we can really sort of be confident in that we'll be able to have not only really robust community engagement and ownership, but I'll be, also be able to come up with recommendations so that we're, we're, we're being, we're, we're continuing to be good stewards of the public's trust and investment in the bond expenditures. So I'll just leave that, you know, I, I, I think it was been a really difficult year. I think the most inspiring thing that I'm holding on to is that joy in Joyce Harris's voice, when she said, "This is gonna be great". It was just this wonderful reminder of how lucky are we and how fortunate are we that we get to do this and that this is our, this is our challenge and opportunity. So I think I know that in terms of. That's my cue. So then in terms of planning and, and, and moving forward with this project, we want to, we want to take special care with that joy and make sure that we're helping to really cultivate that and spread that joy throughout our community.
Dani, do you?
That's fabulous.
You want me to send the one-pager?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you so much for that, Dani. I'll share with you all that when I called Ms. Joyce Harris, she didn't think she was gonna be able to make it to the meeting. She wasn't feeling very well. And so to see her on the call a few hours later, it was so great that her, that invitation inspired her and just kind of jolted her out of her, you know, not feeling well. And I, I just, that was a really great meeting. That part of the meeting on Tuesday was really fabulous. Thank you so much for just the process that you're, you've engaged with, with OSM. And I'm, I'm really hopeful that this presents an opportunity to incorporate some African indigenous ways of knowing, you know, cooperative economics, you know, talking until the talking's all done in a circle and some of these other ways of, that I think can improve and inform the project. I, I trust that that's gonna happen. I'm really very excited to watch as this develops. Are there, does, does anyone have questions about what Dani just presented? Specifics? More details? And really excited also to hear that the philanthropic community is involved. I had not considered that or heard that, and so that's really, that's really great. It sounds like they're supporting some of the community-based organizations so they'll be able to fully participate?
Yeah, definitely. So in the last couple of rounds of funding, there has been specific, I don't know if you're familiar, you probably are, but Meyer Memorial Trust has launched a specific effort around making sure that the Black community is supported. And as part of that effort included grants to several of our partners to really participate in this. And as you know, Rukia Adams, who also works at Meyer Memorial Trust, was part of that. And so, and then, you know, we work really closely with our education, their equitable education portfolio, and certainly Oregon Community Foundation. And Marcy Bradley and the work that she's done around the African-American Success Plan has been really instrumental in sort of making sure that organizations are supported. I think you, you know, and certainly Andrew knows from planning that metro and planning the city, that some of these processes can feel rather sort of like extractive of sort of like content and, and community capital. And so I think we're just so fortunate to be able to have the community wraparound this center. And I think it's really out of a spirit of support and, and just great hope and aspiration for, for the outcomes. And I think we'll definitely tap both of your expertise too in wanting to make sure that, you know, in terms of this planning process, that we're, that we're really living into our values and, and sort of, you know, kind of leading into that discomfort around sort of like, well, what, you know, what do we already know? What do we need to learn? And, you know, something that could come out could be completely different than what we've ever done before, and that's okay. And so I think just hearing you talk about some of the potential of all the ways that we can make sure that this is in alignment with our values is really exciting.
Well, stay tuned, everybody. Really exciting. Thank you so much, Dani. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to the update on the 2020 Bond Capacity Scope of Work. Dan, is that you?
That is me. Our Senior Director of OSM, Marina Cresswell, is without power at the moment. So if she gets power, she will be back. So this topic was intended to be a quick update anyway, and when I'm doing it, it'll probably be even a little bit quicker. The reason that it's on the agenda for tonight is the, the 2020 bond has $10 million allocated for capacity work. Pretty commonly, when you look at school district bond efforts, they break out their work into three different categories. Educational facility improvements, so like updating classrooms or science labs or CTE spaces. Physical facility improvements, so think of that as fixing broken stuff. And then capacity. And for growing districts, that usually means a new school. If they need a new high school or something else, they'll, they allocate funds for capacity. In large urban districts, that can, that can mean new capacity, but it also means changes to capacity. And so as the development of the 2020 bond was underway, we knew that the, that we were going into this enrollment review, this multi-year enrollment review. And so without specific known need for potential capital improvements to support that work, $10 million was set aside for any enrollment or capacity changes that were, capital changes that were needed. So the reason that it's on the agenda tonight is we like to be really transparent and linear when we talk about when we're going to spend funds. And we have a couple of projects that are coming up that we anticipate using and allocating these capacity funds. One of them is a move of the access program over to our Twiliger site. That will be opening, we're targeting opening that over winter break of 2021. So beginning of the school year or beginning of the calendar year 2022, the access program will be in their new site. So we anticipate utilizing capacity funds for that project. Additionally, other capital and facility changes that happen that come out of the Southeast Guiding Coalition, we anticipate those funds will, will be used, that these capacity funds will be used for that work as well. So I don't have a bunch of detail. Patrick LeBeuf, who is our Director of our Facilities and Asset Management and Project Management Team, has got some more specifics about the scope of work at Twiliger if you want to hear some more about that. But really, this is just to let you know, this is how we plan on allocating these funds. So when you see reports later down the line of our spend, you're not, you're not caught off guard, like, oh, I didn't know we were there yet for that. So that's, that's why we have this topic tonight. So if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
So to clarify, this is, this, this part of, this $10 million will be used to open up or modify buildings to be used as like staging or staging space or to move?
We're targeting this for permanent movement of the students. So the access, the, there's the student bodies moving to a new location over to the Twiliger site. So the funds, I think, Patrick, help me out here, what the current estimate of that, of?
Yeah.
Project is?
The current estimate is 3.1 million. And we're out to bid right now. So we'll get a reality check in about 30 days and see where we're at, construction costs.
And then the balance would be used for any needs that arise out of the Southeast Guiding Coalition work?
Exactly. That's what we anticipate.
Okay.
Can you give some examples of what that might be? Just hypothetically?
Yeah, and Patrick, maybe I'll ask you to give some examples of when we're moving enrollment and moving grades. What are, what are common scope of work that need to accommodate that?
So many times if we, if we have a program that's moving out of a school into another school, many times it might involve some restroom modifications, like if we're moving older kids out of a building into a, and, and younger kids are moving into the classes that they, that they just vacated, we'll modify bathrooms. We might have to do some minor room modifications for the program requirements. If it's a sped classroom that's moving into a classroom that's vacated, you know, it could be some, maybe a little more major improvements. So it definitely varies, the spectrum. It's quite broad. It can be. More major work would be an example of the Twiliger site. So, you know, we're moving into an old Montessori, Montessori school. It's been used as a Montessori school, which by definition doesn't rely on technology. And so we're doing major technology upgrades into the Twiliger site. It's probably the largest scope of work that we're working on there. A lot of ADA improvements. I could go down the list, but.
No, that's, that's, yeah, no, no, that's, that's actually really helpful just to get a sense and of, as we sort of make it work. Yeah, no, I appreciate the update. I think one thing to note, Dan, in our next, I'm not sure when the next. I mean, I guess it could be part of our bond committee update. Are we, when, when do we, can you remind me when we go to the Board? The BAC goes to the Board quarterly with updates, is that right? The Bond Accountability Committee, and does, do we do any sort of regular bond updates for the entire Board? Is that on our agenda at all for the year?
Not to the entire Board with this subcommittee. This is where the bond updates have been going. And so the materials, you know, are certainly available, publicly available on our website, and then are made available. The same BAC materials that go to the BAC also go to this committee.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember if we, if we had any sort of formal report outs separate from the Budget Advisory Committee. Michelle, the only thing I would note, there is a lot of, there was a lot of Board interest in this $10 million when we both put it in the bond last year and when we passed it. So I think this would be just a good thing to note in our next update, just so that the entire Board has awareness. I think it sounds like exactly what we put the money in there for, was to help facilitate, you know, sort of capacity issues. And we're working on Southeast right now. There's capacity issues all through the district that we're gonna need, but this does seem to be, because it's where we're focused with the SEGC process. It, it makes sense to me. I just want to make sure the whole Board sort of has visibility into it.
That's great. So I'll add that to my, my update, which is, they're usually very light because I don't take very good notes. But I've made note for myself to include this $10 million capacity piece in my next update. Are there any further questions? Thank you, Patrick and Dan, for that update. And that was, that was quick, I think quicker than Marina would have done it. Our next agenda item is the discussion on the PPS Business Equity Status and the Goals. And you all have received, I guess, a 10-page memo from Dan and Marina, Emily and Paul Williams, explaining the equity, business equity policy and the outcomes. I don't know who's kicking us off, if, who's kicking this off. Is, is that you, Emily?
I will, I'll go ahead and kick us off. Emily will help me out as well, though. So if it works, I'm going to now attempt to present. I'm really good with this on Google Meets, but not so much soon. Okay, do people see my screen?
Yes.
All right. I'll even hit present. That might make it even better. Let's see if I can. All right, well, let's move that over there. So appreciate the opportunity to give an update on, on our Business Equity status. Want to call out just some goals for this topic today. Really, what we want to do is share some information so we kind of gain, gain an understanding generally where PPS is with the biggest business equity objectives, what our initiatives are, what efforts have gone into date, then have some discussion and get some feedback from this group and continue the conversation. I think some, some people know here that we've asked our performance auditors to take a deep dive into our business equity practices and what our policies are and what our outcomes have been. And we anticipate that they will have some analysis and findings in a month or two. So we almost pushed this whole discussion off until we had those findings, until someone had the good idea of saying, "Well, let's, let's talk about some kind of base information at this meeting. So when we see those findings and we have more discussion down the line, we'll continue to have discussion about this." It's more of a level playing field. People have some of that same information and same background. So that's really the intent of today's presentation. We're not asking for any sort of specific feedback or information, more just sharing of information and having a dialogue. So the structure of this presentation is we'll do an overview and, and call out some observations specifically on the current Board policy, the Administrative Directive, some of our efforts to date, both internally and our external partners. And then we'll look at a little bit of data and what the outcomes have been over the years, then have some discussions and feedback, and then talk about planning for our next meeting, whether that be June or July, where, where we hit this topic again. So with that, we'll start with the overview. So with that, we'll start with the overview and we thought we would start at a high level and kind of work into the detail. Uh, in the memo that was provided in your packets, there's an overview of our policy around uh, our equity and public purchasing contracting policy that includes the business equity. And so I was going to ask Emily if she wouldn't mind uh, just giving an overview of our policy.
Sure. And like Dan says, we go into a much greater detail in that memo, but just a reminder here about our equity and public purchasing policy. It dates back to 2012. Um, and we've been working um, on implementing ever since. There are three primary goals, what I call the three prongs of the EPPC. There's business equity first, and that's where we're, that's what we're going to talk about today. So that's where we're trying to um, see that more of our contracting dollars uh, go to minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses and emerging small businesses. So it's about business ownership and where our contracting dollars go. Uh, but the other two prongs, to just to briefly mention workforce equity, that's about who is working on our district construction project. And it's about the efforts to increase the numbers of minorities and women on our construction projects and to grow um, that number through apprenticeship opportunities. So I, I think we'll probably talk about that on another, another day. And then finally, the third prong is the career learning equity prong. And that's where we require our contractors who have contracts of a certain size who offer career learning opportunities um, for our students. And some of our larger contractors have done some really creative things. But today we're just going to talk about business equity. Next slide, Dan. Okay. So again, just overview, it's been nine years. We've been working on this for a long time. Uh, the goal is overall to equitably distribute the district's contracting opportunities. Um, it asks us to improve our efforts over time. It encourages competition while still meeting the district goals and needs. And recognize, and it recognizes that these are long-term goals requiring work and resources to implement. In general, the policy is, is, is very general. There are no specific goals or metrics for business equity named in the policy itself.
May I ask just a really quick clarifying question? Um, and the, the memo's not um, uh, it, I don't see the page numbers, but I've, I'm looking at the, is it, is the policy number .095P or is it .096? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm think, I'm looking at the administrative directive.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk about the AD next.
Okay.
Okay, so the administrative directive was signed by the superintendent in 2013. Um, and that's where we have the aspirational goal of 18% for the participation of MBEs, WBEs, emerging small businesses, uh, service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, which is a category added to the COVID database later in time. And it applies to construction, architecture, engineering and related services within the district. Um, it also requires, uh, the AD requires that we uh, include cultural responsiveness, diversity policies and uh, efforts to use um, certified subcontractors as part of the evaluation criteria when we issue RFPs. So we've been doing that since 2013. And we've refined that language along the way. And in fact, um, our most uh, recent iteration of that language is included in the memo that you uh, were providing. The, the AD also requires that for purchases below the formal solicitation threshold, so that where, where we're only required to go out and get three quotes, that at least one of the three vendors that we approach is a certified uh, vendor. And um, both OSM and purchasing are responsible for ensuring compliance and, and our PMs do a great job at that. And oftentimes they'll go to more than one certified firm. So some observations about the AD. So again, this is where the aspirational goal for the participation of certified businesses comes from. That's that 18%. That's, the goal is that overall, across all construction, architecture, engineering-related services, 18% of our dollars will go to certified business. We say here it's not supported by data and we go into greater detail about that in the memo. But we don't have good data for the availability of certified firms across different um, trade areas or, you know, uh, work areas. Um, the 18% goal was developed back in 2013, just looking at what some other public agencies are doing. We know uh, public agencies, other local public agencies have different goals. Um, some as low as 10%, some as high as 20%. We're a little, we're all kind of in the range. Um, we all kind of struggle in some of the same areas, usually construction, and Dan will go into that in more detail. Again, the goal is based, reminder, the goal is based only on the company ownership. It doesn't have to do with the workforce, which is where that other prong of the policy comes in, workforce equity. Um, because it's just a very generally stated across-the-board goal, it could be met in a number of ways. We could contract um, with a small number of large, successful certified firms and get to that 18% perhaps. Or we could contract with, you know, dozens and dozens, hundreds of very small certified firms and get to that same number. It's not specified in the AD how we do that. And then finally, our reporting to date has really been focused on that 18% goal. Dan's going to talk about a little later, but we are, are starting to think about how perhaps we change or add to our focus to focus on the number of firms being benefited um, and the number of dollars going to certified firms. Um, in addition to trying to reach and report on that aspirational goal.
Thank you, Emily. Um, so we throw this slide up there, uh, really a sort of food for thought. There might be some homework uh, discussed later uh, in the presentation. Um, but as you look through the memo and look through the policy and AD, here are some considerations if, if we do have some more conversation about updating those. Uh, that are again, food for thought, you know, does the policy and the AD adequately define success for our certified business participation? Uh, do the goals align with our values and what the overall intentions are? Uh, and since the focus is purely on dollars and company ownership, are there other potential areas that the district might want to consider as part of that definition of success, whether that be the number of contracts or the number of firms that are awarded contracts, company uh, diversity or diversity of their employees or other things such as technical assistance or uh, mentorship opportunities. So that's just, put this here just to kind of food for thought again, and we'll, we'll touch on this again a little later. Uh, next we want to switch into some current efforts uh, that we put towards our certified business effort or utilization. Uh, this is a slide, actually, I think it's, it's almost the same of when we did a presentation uh, with SIBC late last year. Uh, purchasing and contracting OSM and our contractors amongst other departments and some of our other partners put quite a bit of different effort and strategies into increasing our certified business utilization. So today, we're going to hit on, just highlight a couple of them. The memo goes into some more detail. Uh, but we thought we'd highlight a couple just to give you kind of a flavor of some of the effort that is put in uh, to certified business utilization. And so Emily, again, if you wouldn't mind briefly talking about our Equity and Contracting Advisory Committee.
Sure. So we, we started the Equity and Contracting Advisory Committee back in 2015. It is currently uh, co-led by me and Paul Williams, our solicitation manager in my department. Um, it has included a lot of longtime members, most of whom have been with us all the way since 2015. So they volunteered a lot of time to us. Uh, they advise us on our purchasing and contracting policies, our solicitation policies, and particularly as uh, they pertain to uh, the use of certified businesses. Um, our members include um, a number of representatives of minority-owned businesses women-owned businesses and emerging small businesses. Most of them are small business owners, so they're very active in that sense. Most of them are also um, active in some of the minority contracting um, organizations around, including the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs. Uh, that we have members who are involved in the National Association of Minority Contractors and the Portland Business Development Group. Most of these people also over time has, have worked on uh, PPS projects. So they bring a lot of different perspectives. Um, and um, and we just are so appreciative of their efforts, but they've had a lot of in, input, impact over the years on where we focus our efforts and um, where they see we can make, you know, make some progress and maybe where we, where we shouldn't focus as much. Um, so again, we meet with them quarterly as well as reach out whenever we need suggestions. We appreciate this group a great deal.
Hey Emily, this is um, Director Konstam. Have you had discussion in this group about our most recent numbers and our inability to meet our aspirational goals? And have they had any specific feedback on um, on why that might be? And what, what we can do differently?
So we share our numbers with them every time we meet. We share updated, detailed um, reports with them. Um, you know, I'm trying to think of what I've heard from them. It's, it's not very different from what I've heard from them over the years. I, I do know that in um, in recent, the past recent year or two, what I'm hearing from them is that they're very busy, because it's very busy out there. Um, and I also know, as an aside from um, speaking to the the uh, director of the Oregon COVID, the certified, you know, um, certification office, that we've lost a lot of certified firms, um, especially since COVID. We lost um, almost 20% of certified firms, whether they went out of business or just didn't renew. So I think um, I think, I think the struggles we're having in, in the construction area are, are not unique. Um, but they're always giving us good advice around, you know, again, recent revisions to our RFP language, um, how to focus outreach, um, et cetera.
Um, I, I have a question also, I guess, along those same lines. So this, um, about Business Oregon, so they're the business, they're the agency that does the certification. Do, is there any reason why we can't use firms that are not certified?
So the struggle there is trying to pick
Sometimes minority contractors don't want to advertise in Oregon that they're black-owned, for instance, because they feel like it might, it might hurt them, not help them. It, it, it can help them for public work, but it also kind of puts a target on them, um, that, that a lot of them, that, this is from what I've heard.
Yeah.
So is there, I mean, do we need to use, absolutely need to use certified firms versus just woman-owned, minority-owned?
So the um, that, the challenge is um, figuring out the ownership of a company. And that's what the, that's the purpose that Business Oregon and the COVID database serves is because they get all that documentation, verify, verify again every couple of years. Um, and ensure that these companies really are owned by the people they say they are and have the certifications they say they do. And so I think that's why most public agencies, I, all that I know of in the area, just rely on that certified status and then help encourage um, firms to get certified if they're not there yet.
I guess um, a follow-on question. If we were to use a minority-owned firm that wasn't in the COVID system, would those dollars that PPS spends in that area still count towards a utilization goal?
They would not. We, we go by certified or not certified. Um, I, I want to go back and mention one other reason that it's tricky is because a certification um, actually has revenue limits associated with each kind of certification. And you know, ESPs, emerging small businesses has a particularly low revenue limit. But, but businesses can also grow out of certification, no matter which category they're in, when they become successful enough. And I think that comes from that goal that we're trying to build and grow small businesses into successful long-term um, businesses. So that's another area where it'd be very complicated um, for us to figure, figure out, you know, a company's revenue status. So.
So Emily, that's interesting. I actually, I actually didn't know that about a um, COVID-certified firm. So if a company's large enough and it's minority-owned, it, it no longer is listed as a certified firm and would no longer, even if we contacted with them, would not count towards our targets?
That's right.
Oh, that's new information. Thank you.
I, and I, I don't think I knew that either. I believe I, I knew that emerging small businesses had a cap on the amount of, the, the number of years they could say they're emerging. It's, it's a long time. It's way past startup. I mean, you can be a firm that's 30 years old and still be considered or certified as an emerging small business. Um, and I thought there was a, something like a 12-year limit. But I didn't realize that minority-owned firms, and I'm guessing the same for men, for women-owned, um, had a revenue cap that applied. I, I know that there's a revenue cap for construction versus professional technical, but I didn't realize that. Um, I mean, so maybe the good news is you say in the memo, you're not sure how, there's no data to support the number of firms in any given category. Um, but I'm wondering if there's also some data missing in terms of if uh, minority-owned or women-owned firms have moved out of, are we growing firms, in other words, or, or, or are they just not renewing? Are we providing the opportunities as a public institution for them to grow? And, and take on more, you know, uh, more work, more work, bigger work?
Right. So um, just to clarify, the emerging small business revenue cap is, is pretty low. And it's a much higher, and I, I don't remember the numbers. I haven't looked at that for a while. It's much higher for the uh, MBEs and WBEs, but there still is a cap, but it, but if you're an MBE or WBE, you're going to have to be pretty, pretty successful to move out of the cert. Whereas ESPs, you move out much sooner because really that's um, you know, those very small emerging businesses as you, as you know, so.
And anecdotally, I don't know the specifics, uh, but we, we've, we've utilized a couple of large subcontractors who early on in the bond program were certified and then they, then they graduated out. And um, are still on some of our projects, but are no longer certified firms.
But just to, to, I mean, to declare, I mean, like, I'm assuming, and I'm thinking hypothetically, it's certainly not, you know, we're, we're not at this process yet, but you know, if, if we end up, if, if, if Colas is a successful bidder, I'm assuming Colas is no longer um, a certified firm. I guess I might be wrong about that. I just know they're, they're, they're one of the, the most successful minority-owned firms. If they were a successful bidder on Jefferson, that would not qualify towards our 18% aspirational goal.
If they were no longer certified, and I, they may be on the edge. I don't remember. I, I haven't checked their status uh, most recently. Last time we used them, they were still certified.
They were still last time? Okay.
Emily, I'd be interested in seeing um, the language around that and what those thresholds are.
Okay. Yeah, I will, I will look that up and get that to you.
And the one thing about um, that we, that we know about that firm in particular is they have a very strong track record of um, I mean, they get 70% participation from their subs. Um, and so even if they weren't certified, if, you know, they, they still have a very strong track record in hiring and working with minority and women-owned subcontractors. So that alone could move those numbers up. And I had another question just about the AD. One of the bullet points says the district will actively participate. I'm sorry. Um, the district will include culturally, cultural responsiveness um, as part of the evaluation criteria. And I was wondering like, what does that mean? Uh, how do we use cultural competence in that process?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, most of our, 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 we revise the uh, equity evaluation language a little bit depending on what ki- kind of RFP we're looking at. Um, it's, if you look at the language we included in the memo and our most recent revision of um, RFP language for construction projects, when we get to use an RFP for construction. Uh, we do ask about um, I mean, we get at the internal staffing of the firm and the various measures of diversity within that firm. We look at their efforts to um, increase their internal diversity. Then, of course, we really focus on their efforts and plans to bring together, bring diverse partners and certified businesses to the table in the work they're going to do, proposing to do for us. So I, you know, I I would say our focus has been on some of those other factors, not so much the, what was the word, in cultural competency or cultural inclusiveness. But we kind of get at that through their their own, their own composition, the diversity they bring to the table in their staff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dan, are you kind of through? Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. You're not through with your presentation. I'll wait till the end. Sorry.
No worries. We we got a little bit more. I'm going to go through, uh, another area I wanted to highlight a little bit was some of the strategies that our contractors use. And if Marina watches this later, shall we just appointed that I don't have the details she does? So I'm going to go through it fairly quickly. But what we did is we just pulled a couple of images and slides from a presentation that Fordis Construction, who's working on McDaniel High School, provided, I think about a year and a half ago, to the Bond Accountability Committee. And we just want to highlight some of the strategies that they use when they are looking to recruit and utilize certified businesses. So this is, it's a pretty busy slide, but what it starts to show is what what their plan is when, I'll take a step back. Uh, when we do an RFP for CMGC services, a part of that RFP requires them to submit a certified business contracting plan. And so we review that plan and we score those plans. And then, once they are awarded the contract, we look for them to then, of course, implement the plan that they have put in place. This this starts to highlight some of the strategies that they use, including using various procurement methods to bring on board subcontractors from formal and informal solicitation methods. Uh, they use RFPs similar to what we do when we bring on the CMGC. They'll use the same sometimes to bring on primary subcontractors. Uh, they will use direct awards, or they'll go directly negotiate with one firm for a specific scope of work. Um, best value solicitations and traditional low bids are used as well. Uh, outreach is a big component of what our contractor partners do. Uh, that starts very early on and continues all the way through bidding and into construction. Uh, Fordis, in this particular case, highlighted a number of different events that they attended to reach out to certified businesses, whether that be trade shows, presentations at organizations and other events. So they're trying to get the word out about the ability to participate or awareness, participation, and then what firms can do to help win awards. One of the strategies that is very common with our CMGCs is instead of doing a traditional low bid, they do what we call a best value. So they will put a bid package out. Uh, and they will, of course, you know, receive proposals and cost will be a component of that, but won't be the only criteria for which that contractor is selected. So here is an example, best value. Uh, and these will change depending on the project, depending on the scope of work. But here you see cost is only 60% of the potential points that are awarded. Certified business participation, safety record, key personnel, and then experience, recent relative experience are also common criteria. Another common tactic is bid packaging of breaking up bid packages that would traditionally be a large bid package. Let's say it's for demolition and bring that into multiple packages. So you can put them into smaller sized contracts. So some of those smaller certified firms can compete for those projects because there is not as many of the large firms that can handle some of these really large projects. And our modernizations often are really large projects with really large subcontracted scopes of work.
So Dan, with that specific example, do we have any incentives to our contractors to break down bid packages like that? Because, I mean, at the end of this conversation, I want to get to what our strategies are as an owner to improve things. And what you're highlighting here are some best practices and some opportunities. But they're really all at the discretion of the prime contractor who is awarded the bid. So I I'd like to kind of look at it from the lens of the owner. What are we doing as the owner to make sure that we're advocating for our values in this process? And I understand that, you know, once they receive the contract, we can't tell them, oh, you have to break down your, you know, these contracts to, you know, let less than $200,000 a pop or something like that. But but are are there ways that we can incentivize these things that align better with our our values?
Yeah, it's a it's a good question. I think maybe it's an incomplete answer. And we'll get into a little a little bit more here when we look at some of the data. You know, one thing we do is is we are very clear with our contractors what our values are and what our goals are. And that certified business participation, having that be as high as possible, not just meeting, you know, our aspirational goal, but as high as possible, is a primary objective of ours. When they compete for the work, they are required to submit a contracting, a certified business contracting plan. So right there, they are in competition effectively with the other contractors about who is going to have that that best plan. So they submit what their plan is, they are scored based upon that. And then whoever ultimately wins the award, that is a part of their contract. They are required to therefore go through what they said they would do, the efforts they said that they would do. Their contract's required to then go into those efforts. We we can't say you have to hit a specific number because, you know, you know, it is a crystal ball. They're saying, we believe that these efforts, that breaking down our bid packages, I think there's a previous slide that said normally we would expect 40 different bid packages. We've got 50-some on this project. And we're showing you how or which which scopes of work we're breaking down, why we're doing that, and what we think we are going to achieve from that. And they get that input by doing a lot of outreach directly to the certified business community and saying, where do we think there's opportunity for subs to bid on this work? Those are the packages we want to specifically target to break down into smaller pieces, whether that be their door frames and hardware, or their painting, or whatever that might be. Does that, I think that sort of answers the question. Probably doesn't get 100% there.
Um, Amy, if you're talking, you're muted. Um, I I was curious about this. Just two slides ago, we were talking about experience on, recent experience on similar projects. And I know that that can sometimes, that's worth 10 points in our scoring matrix. But if you are trying to grow the capacity of a bill of a business that has not done a particular scope of work, but is capable of doing it, that you need, you need to get that first project so you can use it in in your other, you know, proposals for other public projects. And so I know that that can be a, I know that can be a hard a hurdle for some, for smaller firms, minority and women-owned specifically, um, to prove that they have experience on three projects if they're just making entry into that particular division of work or area of work.
Yeah, I think.
And, oh, I'm sorry. And please go ahead.
I was just going to say, I I think that's a very fair point. And it only, and the only thing I'd point out is the the best value, the scoring, it depends on what that scope is. I think there are certain scopes where experience is more important than others. Um, but it's it's still a valid point.
Um, and the other thing is, I think Amy was asking about incentives. And, you know, the Port of Portland has a very robust and successful mentor protege program that has been, they have been successful in growing firms, the capacity of firms. And so that's not necessarily an incentive. But is that something, considering the the amount of dollars that are going through our our shop as owners, is something like that, something that could be considered as a way to lean into our values around contracting equity and business equity?
I think that's a great example. It's something as we continue to have this conversation that we will want to look into those, the mentorship programs. What are other similar organizations? What are they doing like the port or whether it be someone else? How do they do it? What is the outcome they get out of it? You know, what what is the return on that investment? I I think those are type of conversations. We won't have them all today. But those are, those are the exact type of things we want to talk about here over the next weeks and months and and more.
Yes.
And Dan, are we looking at getting some outside help in terms of really examining those kind of practices? Um, I know we have our our performance auditor, bond performance auditor, um, looking at this. But I think that's going to be less, we're going to get less feedback on strategies and more just feedback on past performance. But are we going to do, for lack of a better word, some kind of audit here and look at the best practices of other organizations?
That is part of the scope of the performance auditor, is looking at other organizations, what their practices are, what their outcomes are, and giving us analysis and findings. And so they are, they're in the middle of doing their field work right now. They're reaching out to contractors and subcontractors and other organizations and having discussions with them. So we haven't seen their findings yet, but that is a component of the work. And not to imply that that's all that we should do. Uh, but that is one, you know, imminent piece of information that we're going to have.
And what about, just because I think it's germane to where we are right now, what about our own internal staffing? Are we looking at reinstalling some kind of position for business equity, either under Danny's shop or within the Office of School Modernization?
We are looking at opportunities for that. And the memo, I think it's fairly brief, but in the memo, we talk about looking at at least one position, which of course could be more in the future, but looking at a position that would be this certified business, really liaison and assistant position to help firms understand, be aware of opportunities, how they can participate in opportunities, how they can be successful in winning awards when they do participate in opportunities. Uh, but also help them be successful once they've won the contract award and they can be a contact, you know, within the organization of saying, here's where I need help, here's where I need support. So that is an active conversation we're having right now.
And is is funding for that position or those positions assumed in our current budget proposal?
The discussions, it's still, we're still looking for discussions. The ones that we're having right now is that as a bond-funded position. It it could end up landing elsewhere, but that's what we've been talking about.
That makes sense.
Um, I just want to throw one thing in just for the record, and that's sometimes the bonding capacity is also a really big barrier. Um, I don't know how we can show up differently in that space, but I and I don't know if the if the mentor protege program addresses that. But I know that for a lot of our certified firms, that's a big barrier to doing larger projects.
Yeah, very much so.
Dan, I don't know if you have more presentation.
I do have a little more.
Go ahead.
Okay, I want to be quick. We're going to, we're going to, Martha, we're going to jump to data. And so we have lots of data. Um, so we're not going to go too deep into it. We we're hoping just to give some kind of high-level data and to to let you think about the, you know, what strategies we might use going forward, where we would get the most return on our investments as we talk about opportunities going forward. So here is a chart that shows the certified business by year. This part chart shows by year, going back about eight years. The first two years you'll see are in gray. That is because that was before we had our B2G system, which is super nice. It ties directly to the COVID database. Our prime and subcontractors put their data straight into that that system. We can disaggregate it and get lots of data. So before we had that system, we effectively did it by hand. So if I wanted to go back as far as we could, where we were, where we started reporting data to show where we have gone over the years. And I think what this what this shows is we had been trending in a good direction for a number of years. I think we're feeling good. We're getting to that 18% aspirational goal. But really, the last couple of years is where we have had more challenges. And so I want to show a a couple, three more, just high-level data breakdowns to give just more information. So here similarly is a breakdown. This is the past. So this is our, has our B2G data. So this is where our good data starts to come from. Uh, differentiates between our consultants and our contractors because our our AD applies to our Division 48 and our Division 49 in contracting. So that's effectively consultants and contractors. So the blue is consultants and contractors is, is that orange color? I'm not sure what the other color is. And so I think, you know, we can start to pull some observations out of this broken-down data. And I think, you know, this starts to illustrate from the consultant side, um, generally, we do fairly well with our certified business participation. On the construction side is where we have more challenges. And then you can see the cumulative totals there over the last. So over the last six years, and this is, this is based on payments, 26% of all payment, over 26% has been certified for consultants and under 15 for our contractors.
So Dan, with both of those last two slides, the precipitous drop in the last two years is a really just a reflection of the 2017 bond work, right? That that things just didn't shake out well with those prime contractors. And that has, is what's created that cliff.
Not necessarily. Let's go through a couple more and then we can come back to that. There's certainly a part of that when our, when big projects uh, don't meet the goal, that they have have a significant amount of dollars to them. So that will, of course, drive the numbers up and down on any given year. Uh, but I think we can, uh, we can see even, even on here, our consultants have also gone down in the last last couple of years as well. So it's not just those those prime CMGC contracts. Wanted to do a breakdown between smaller projects and larger projects. Uh, and this is kind of a simple way to do it. So here, the blue color is our facilities and asset management, our project management department, which generally do smaller projects. And then the other color is our OSM department. So that's our bond-funded. And so those are generally much, much larger projects. And so again, you can see some up and down here. But if you look at the cumulative, our smaller projects generally are higher performing than what are larger projects. So not a big surprise, but just thought we would show it visually so people, we can start to see this dynamic of smaller projects. And this is, this is contractors only, the dynamic between the two. And then this last table here, I might spend just a minute and let, because there's more information, let people kind of run their eyes over it and see if there's anything that jumps out to them. So I'll walk through what the data shows here and what these different columns are. So that first data column there is number of prime contracts. So this is going back to 2015. So that that column gives us total number of contracts in the last six years. The next column is the number of prime contracts that are COVID. So those are the number that are that are certified businesses. So that's how many awards have gone out. And then the third column is the percentage. So just a math number there. So what percentage of our prime contracts have gone to certified businesses? The next group of columns is basically the same things, except it's our subcontracts. So total number of subcontracts, followed by the total number of subcontracts that have gone to certified firms. And therefore, the percentage of subcontracts that have gone to certified firms. And then finally, we see payments out the door. So total paid, total paid to certified businesses, and the percent paid. When you look at the rows, there's two different breakdowns. So these don't all sum. It might be a little deceiving. So the first breakdown is the first two rows. Uh, the facilities department, so generally smaller projects, and OSM, which is generally our large. and OSM, which is generally our larger and sometimes much, much larger projects. And then the bottom two rows are consultants versus our contractors. So I the note there, it looks like I have my uh closed caption on, so maybe you'll see it so much. You know, one thing I pulled out, but I think people can probably pull out some different observations here is uh over one third of our prime contracts since two thousand and fifteen have gone to certified businesses. And I'll I'll just pause and ask the question if anyone else has any other kind of visceral or real quick uh questions or or observations.
Well, yeah, I think this is a really important data breakdown, Dan, and and, you know, sort of counterposing it with the dollars. I mean, this this actually, you know, this actually shows that a very significant number of both prime and subcontractors, you know, some of the subcontractors are are being let out to certified firms, but on a dollar basis, you know, it drops to that sixteen percent. Um, which, you know, gets back to what you just had on the last slide, right? That it's it's the large contracts where um where we were falling short, the small contracts we were we were exceeding, which then also gets at an interesting question that you posted in the memo. You know, what's more important is is are the dollar amounts more? Dollar amounts are certainly important, you know, or again, as we, it it sort of gets to those goals. If the if the goal is to build, you know, small businesses into successful large businesses, then you obviously are always going to start small. And I think it it kind of begs an interesting question of, you know, have we seen growth in terms of of, you know, these these firms? I'm assuming we're we contracted with some of the same firms, you know, again and again, you know, have we seen growth over time, right? That they might have started as a small subcontractor, um, you know, on a project and did it grow into a larger subcontract? Did any of them become primes, right? In in the future, I know that jump can be very, very challenging for for all firms, right? Um, but that's a challenging space. So, yeah, I I think it's interesting to show the data in a lot of different ways. I have other questions about the data, but I'll wait for you to be.
Well, I'll, uh, I know we're running short on time, we have another topic, so I'm going to, uh, I'm almost done. I'm just going to jump through and, you know, here was observations that that jumped out to me or us as we looked at this. And they're they're broad and they're generalized with some of this is there's nuance to all of this, of course. Uh, but generally what has gone well over the course of the last number of years is consultant participation is generally higher. Uh, our small construction projects also generally higher. And I also think what this data tells us is that when you see those procurement numbers being relatively high, is that the direction to the staff and our and our contractors is this is our goal. We want to have this higher level of participation, get out there uh and exercise those strategies. And I think, you know, one one can draw a conclusion that those high numbers of overall contract awards is landing that message. Where we're struggling is our large construction projects and more specifically our large construction subcontracts that are not easily broken down into small packages like mechanical, electrical, plumbing, those type of project uh scopes of work. That's where uh we seem to have our biggest issue. And there's a number of reasons probably why that is. But one is, again, this is kind of broad and anecdotal is there's more, when we're talking about certified firms, there's generally more of them on the smaller end of the spectrum. So it's easier to find them and to bring them on board and for them to be successful. When you're talking about these really big projects, there aren't as many. So there's a lot of competition for these same large subcontractors. And that's, again, that's, you know, that's an oversimplification, but just something that, I know, that would be point out for uh observation.
Um, so what that tells me, Dan, and and I'm, I I agree with you and I appreciate your point, Andrew, about the number of contracts going out the door. And I agree with you that it looks like that our efforts on that end of the spectrum are 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 deep and sincere and generally having an impact. Um, but what that tells me in terms of our larger subcontracts is that there's probably more we can do to compel our primes to be more creative in um really realizing uh those goals. Because it's not just about um increasing the total dollar amount to certified businesses. It's about providing the opportunity for growth of those midsize businesses, you know? I mean, you don't just want to provide opportunity for a lot of firms to get twenty five thousand dollar jobs, you know, at one end of the spectrum, which is like a maybe a, you know, week long job at one school. You know, we want to be really growing the capacity of these slightly larger businesses. And so um my impression at this point is that um we state our aspirational goals and then we generally step out of the way once our large contracts are awarded. And I think that we can probably be a more active owner in terms of whether it's changing our our RFPs or, you know, whatever the strategies might be. Um, I think that there's probably more we can do on our big projects to start to to demand different different results there. And and for me personally, I mean, that's that's what really, that's going to make a huge impact on the economy. These small jobs and these small businesses make an impact on the economy too. Um, but building that capacity is is kind of legacy type work. And we have the opportunity here with so much, so many of these large projects.
I I appreciate your comments, um, Amy, and and also, Dan, just really appreciate having us, um, the data broken down like this um to tell a more complete story, fill in the gaps that I had, the questions I had. Um, and I agree with um Amy, what you said. I think that being more creative with those midsize, perhaps um in the areas, the divisions of work that are like mechanical HVAC, um, electrical, plumbing, we require those subcontracts to partner with um with minority and women in firms as a way of um growing those smaller businesses. Um, if there are no other comments, I'm just looking at the time to keep us. We have one more um very important topic and we have technically nine minutes left. Um, so if if we can move ahead to that next topic and that topic would be um the overview of the EdSpecs, educational specifications and design standards.
Hey, Michelle, can I just really put, I know we're going to come back to this in the future, so just thirty seconds just to put some topics on that I'd love. Um, you know, I thought it was really interesting in the memo, the eighteen percent, right? That the number is arbitrary. It's an aspirational goal, it's arbitrary. And I really thought the point of, you know, um, it doesn't necessarily take into account what's available out there is is a really important one, right? And when goal setting, if we set it too high, if we set a goal too low, that doesn't provide a whole lot of value. And if we set it too high, it doesn't provide a lot of value either. I would be really interested, as as Amy talked about earlier, comparing best practices in other jurisdictions, but also comparing that data. Um, what are what are their goals and and are they achieving them, right? Because I think that's a good way of kind of getting at some of the things Amy said. Are there things we can be doing better or the things we can be doing more? Had we set this 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 aspirational goal at fifteen percent in two thousand and thirteen, we'd be patting ourselves on the back right now because we hit sixteen percent, right? But instead, when we set it at eighteen and we're falling short, I think the the really important question is, are other jurisdictions, you know, doing doing better? And and what can we adopt from them in terms of practices? I do also think it's worth noting in this region, you know, you noted this in your memo, there's not a lot of supply. And so to a certain extent, i- if we're more successful, it may mean another government is less successful, right? And um because we may just be taking the firm that would have taken a contract somewhere else and putting them onto a school contract. Um, I, you know, I I would prefer that, but that doesn't necessarily build the overall, um, you know, census of of certified firms, you know, in the in the region. And so thinking about ways to do that as well for future conversation. Thanks.
And and you also, um, in your memo, talk about um the lack of a disparity study, which I think Portland did one maybe in the two thousand and tens or or before two thousand and ten, maybe two thousand and nine, I can't remember. But um, you know, Prosper Portland has a huge development happening at the post office. Um, the city Portland was just audited in their contracting um uh contracting, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a positive audit. And then Metro's got the Affordable Housing Bond. And I'm wondering if there's um, if other jurisdictions would go in on a disparity study. It might be time to think about that so we know what the supply of um contractors in each division are as a way of setting setting goals, realistic goals. So it's just a question out there. Um, it looks like um Dana and John have joined us to talk about EdSpecs.
Hello, everyone. It's good to be with you. Went ahead and shared my screen. I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible. Um, but but I do want to give this very important topic, um, the time and space it needs. So uh just just feel free to unmute yourself and and interrupt me with any questions you might have as we go through this. Uh, so today we'll talk a little bit about the operations document landscape, process um and master planning. EdSpec versus design standards are sibling documents. They're not the same, but they are related. Talk about stakeholders, our methodology, and then we're going to go into one case study just to give you a glimpse into the the gears of this machine. So these are the the active documents within operations. Today we'll talk about just the EdSpec and the design standards. Um, these documents cover all aspects of the built environment of our schools. I would characterize the two documents we'll talk about today as siblings again. They are are both design consultant facing. Where they differ is with their respective stakeholders. So the input for the EdSpecs comes from our educators and the input for our design standards typically comes from our operations team. So just to situate these two documents in the design process, both are silent on specific site conditions. The EdSpec in particular is meant to be tailored to unique circumstances of each project. The EdSpec represents an ideal case for the built environment and does not account for dozens of variables embedded as something as seemingly innocuous as a as site zoning or something program driven. So an example of that would be the 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 dance program at Jefferson that will have an amazing space. And this process allows for that. Um, so all of that is to say is that each project moves forward with a board adopted master plan, which will align our standards with the site constraints and then our program uh with the the project budget. So just to speak a little bit about how these documents are different, the EdSpec outlines a set of instructional performance requirements needed to support twenty first century teaching and learning. And it is the foundation on which master planning and design work can begin. The design standards are, it's a more technical document. It describes how the space is built and finished. Um, it it goes into details about paint, uh specifying low VOC stuff, uh the type of whiteboards we need, um, and then goes into some details about how windows are actually tied into the exterior envelope for buildings so that they're air and water tight. So just again, looking at an example inside of a classroom, the EdSpec is going to say things like uh the area of the classroom, how big it's going to be, where it's located within the building, uh, the number and type of sinks, um, then just generally other examples, types of furniture, uh demonstration tables, teaching supports, um, storage is a big one. Um, teachers can never have enough storage. And then the type details around those types of appliances and the types of storage. Uh, to contrast that with the design standards, um, in the design standards, we're going to talk about kind of um, the compatibility of our building materials with our cleaning systems, the required thickness of flooring, things like that, and the the type of primer that we're going to need with with um uh again, different finish materials. So that's that's really the distinction. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail about the EdSpec process and engagement, just to tell you about um, the work we've done with educators to express their vision vision. Uh, these are the folks that we've talked to. The the two columns on the the left hand side are educators, um, either subject matter experts or building leaders that have gone through the modernization process. And then the column on the right hand side are friends and custodial and maintenance, just to make sure we're aligned with their their practices. Um, and forgive me, I I'm an important point here. We're we're about fifty percent through this process and the names you see here really reflect the subject areas that we've explored so far, uh namely visual and performing arts, special education and athletics. Um, we we haven't dug in dug into um maker spaces, PE. Um, we we got a ways to go still, so. Um, so again, just to showing you some of the EdSpec, um, and we'll send it back to them. Uh, so so this is a very, very iterative process. We're constantly getting feedback um and refining the language until until we get it right. Um, w- with visual performing arts is incredibly complex space needs. So um it was many, many iterations to get it right, um, but we got there. Uh, the outcome is what you see on the right hand side of the screen. And at this scale, it probably doesn't look that different than the previous previous version of the EdSpec. Um, but our our approach really foregrounded the intended program or function rendered through narrative and supplemented with detailed information on the architectural supports. So I I want to explore that a little bit um, because I think it's important and I think it's a powerful addition to the way that we communicate our educational values. Uh, so just to double click in on this narrative that you see here, basically, it's a it's a description of this is what's happening in the room. This is, this is a window into the educational program so that we create a proper seat bed to allow the designers that we work with to make the best possible decisions about how to accomplish that. We're not here to design the building. Um, we're we're here to to set expectations about how the space should perform. And we're going to leave it to our very talented architectural collaborators to help us get there. So I want to go into one case study here really quickly, um, just to show you well, a little bit about why this is so important again with the narrative. So looking at um the restroom, that's a focus uh associated with the the sped focus option classroom in our buildings. Uh, so again, looking at the, excuse me, at the the program narrative, and we'll just double click into that. And I'll just read read it because I think this is important. The accessible restrooms must be sized to support the safe movement of three occupants simultaneously, two paraeducators and one student reliant on a mobility device. Minimum accessibility standards described in the Americans with Disabilities Act do not provide sufficient floor area to observe district protocols for student assistance. Consider the turn radius of both manual and motorized wheelchairs as well as a change table and motorized lift. Although primarily intended to serve special education students, at least one restroom of this type should be provided in every building regardless of current programming. So really, what we're trying to do here is through the EdSpec, it's we're taking value statements from documents like PPS Reimagined or the Long Range Facility Plan, and we're giving them a dimensional and material reality. And just to show you a little bit about the process we we use to get there, um, we developed three D models to explore the spatial requirements, to really study these with our with our friends in in um physical and occupational therapy. So and and we we did get into the details about how to choreograph handbars, grab bars, um, sinks, the types of sinks, mirrors, everything. So I show you this this example, um, and it it may seem, it may seem minor in the context of three hundred thousand square feet. Um, and perhaps incidental, but um for our students with disabilities going to the bathroom is one of the most challenging or vulnerable parts of their day. So in order to, I think, center the spaces and elevate the dignity of our students, it's absolutely critical that we get this right. Um, so just to show you the complete picture, um, this is just the entry on focus program restrooms. We go into a lot of detail about um the space requirements I described earlier, uh but also access, security and acoustics, HVAC, plumbing surfaces, electrical technology, not so important for a restroom, but you never know. Um, equipment, furniture and storage, um, and and provide as much detail, I think, without designing the space, um, but to really support the vision of our educators. And that was super, super fast. So um I'll go ahead and stop sharing and welcome your reflections.
So John, that was great and it was really fast, but I really appreciated all of that information. I might have missed this upfront, I apologize, it's a it's a remedial question. Are this this update to the EdSpecs and design standards? Um, wh- wh- what's, why, why, why now? What's the timing? Because we've had these in place, right? So why are we doing this process now?
Totally, um, we've learned a lot, basically. Uh, so we've got some modernizations under our belt and we want to reflect all those lessons that we've learned. And that that's long story short.
Great. And are and are we, is is also the timing of this just in in, you know, for the twenty twenty bond projects? And then, of course, you know, projects in the future, but now. Great. And are and are we is is also the timing of this just in in, you know, for the twenty twenty bond projects? And then, of course, you know, projects in the future, but now is a good time since given those lessons learned updated.
Totally, yeah. Yeah.
I I I appreciate your your presentation, John, and did not know, you know, that we went above and beyond ADA standards. You know, in fact, more than just a turning radius, but actually the inclusion of this um additional equipment is was fabulous to to learn about. And I'm also really um happy to see that, you know, we're an educational institution. We're taking in the information that we've learned and we're actually putting it to use, like we're learning, actually learning from our experiences and um, in this iterative process. So I I really appreciate that you called that called that out.
Are are the design specifications, um? I know this is something when I got on the board, I just heard a lot of talk about. Do are these are these adopted administratively? Or do these come to the board after you're done with them?
The Ed spec, yes, the design.
Sorry, I said designs, I said, oh, things combined. Yes, the Ed specs. Thank you.
No worries. Uh, yeah, so the Ed spec, um, I would I would look for it again in October-ish. I'll be be bringing it back when we've completed all the configurations for for your review and approval, hopefully. Um, uh, but the the design standards are are not a board adopted document.
I just saw Roseanne take note of that. October board calendar.
This is maybe a more, it's it's more of a governance question. I I am curious as to why the board adopts Ed specs and whether that is that common in districts across the country? Is that unique to Portland? What what's sort of the the reason for that?
A good question.
It's not just the Ed specs, it's any modification to the Ed specs. Which is can can has has been a fair number.
Yeah, and and honestly, I'm 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 just trying to understand a little more the rationale behind that. I I will tell you, these feel very, very operational. Um, so I'm sort of in my mind trying to figure out where's the where's the value that an elected board brings to a process such as this. And and that's why I'm sort of curious, is this, of course, every district across the country adopts Ed specs? That's that's very, very common best practice. Or is this something unique to Portland?
So um, I guess the direct answer to your question is, I don't know. Uh, but there are some very big questions like around like how big we build our buildings. That will be the outcome of the Ed spec. And that's an aggregation of just just some of the instructional area and add any uh an efficiency factor. So it's going to be consequential um for for literally the the square footage of our building. Um, it's also, I think, really helpful moving into the master planning process to understand what the discrepancies are going to be between our ideal state. Again, that's a very ideal and how we've tailored the document to match a master plan and and what the actual built project will will be and how it will depart from certain aspects of the document.
And Andrew, I appreciate your question, but I I think it is because, and I I I support it, and I think it is because the Ed specs are really the manifestation of our educational vision for these buildings. Um, and because of them being bond funded and the board are the representatives of the community. Um, I think it's important that the board has the opportunity to endorse or question. You know, how ultimately how those funds are used and um, what values are guiding that process? That's my stab at answering your question, which I I definitely think is a very valid question. And John, um, I wanted to ask, so you know, I I I love the meeting that we had um a month or so ago where you went through the um the the three overlays on this Ed spec process of universal design, uh, trauma informed care and um, I believe the other one was um just our our racial equity and social justice lens. I thought that was ama- an amazing meeting. So we've talked a lot about like sort of tweaking the design standards based on things we've learned, but to what degree are we revisiting and tweaking some of the actual programmatic elements that are in the Ed specs?
Yeah, so it's a great question. Um, there's not one space in the Ed spec where I can say this is our our universal design. Uh, so universal design is going to cut across so many aspects of our experience and our perception of the environment. It's going to cost signage, it's going to cost a restroom, it's the example we talked about today. My favorite example of universal design in the district is the cafeteria at Grant High School. There is some place to sit for everybody there. The way that I think we've supported um those values through this process is um foregrounding that in our educator interviews. Um, quite honestly, we've not really needed to do that because our educators are on it, that they're really thinking about this stuff and foregrounding this stuff when when facilities folks like myself come and bug them. Um, and then the other the other space, there are other areas of the Ed spec where we're being really intentional and really deliberate about that. So um, we're currently have a community process for developing inclusive playgrounds. Um, where there's a kind of overt mission to to elevate and create space for students with disabilities. Trauma informed design, um, again, those are value statements that are going to live in our long range facility plan. But there are very material and very concrete things that we can draw from that. So the aspect again at at um the cafeteria at Grant High School, it it has a very narrow aspect. So you don't get these really anxiety inducing vistas that can be triggering for some students. Those are things that we'll talk about in this document.
Um, thank you for that. Um, and and Andrew, thank you for that question. I I also wonder you know, to the extent of like, you know, how how's the board engage in the process? Are we are we informed and have an opportunity to ask questions or do we need to dial down into kind of operational things which I feel are outside of our purview? Um, I'd I'd also be really interested in in learning what other what other districts, how 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 deep they go into this um, process. Really love that the um our value statements are also in the in the, not in the Ed specs, but the design standards. I think that's really great. That's up, um, including those value statements really gives us the opportunity to um what to operationalize those values. Codify them and um hopefully see them in the built environment. So um, does anybody else on the call have questions about what was just presented, um, designs, design standards or the Ed specs? And if not, um, it looks like we're uh we can adjourn, um, and we can get to the Southeast Guiding Coalition Meeting for those of us that are attending. Thank you all.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, staff, for the great report.